And they've had many trials and tribulations. And so today, we're going to hear what they have to say. I have, I'm gonna let them speak, introduce themselves, say for a minute or two, just so we can have orientation to who they are, their background, and what they're doing. And then I have seven questions that I will ask them. And then we will open the floor to comments. But it's really important, the reason we're doing this is because there's nothing more important in America today than what's going on in our schools. And we need people on the front lines, and you cannot get more on the front lines than being on the school board. So first, I'd like to introduce Scott Fischel. He's on the Riverside School Board. And I'm not gonna break all your hearts. So any pain for Mentor School Board? And Jeremiah Sawyer, who is from the North Royalton School Board. All right, so with that, look at that. I have one other thing to say before we get started. One of the rare times I set up my speaker and it worked the first time. So very, very exciting. But Scott, please take us away.
Hello, everybody. Okay, the school board. What is the school board, right? It's the battlefield, it's the front lines. So the whole goal, for me running anyway, was to get involved, to keep out the CRT and the SEL, the social emotional learning. And just a quick overview as to how that came into the schools. The federal government put a whole boatload of money out there across the country, to all the school districts in the whole country, and then said, here's a bunch of programs you can choose from, buy whatever you want, and we're giving you the money to buy it. So it came into the schools free. Okay, so it was not local taxpayer money, it was pushed by the federal government. Okay, so that's being pushed, as everyone probably knows, nationwide. And I ran to keep it out, and then as I was running, I found out it was already in. And now the goal is to get it out. And Tom and I have been collaborating and working hard and putting forth information and challenging the administration, the staff, and the teachers to some degree about the dangers of social emotional learning and why we should remove it. And of course, they want to keep it. Okay, so that's it in a nutshell as to where we are right now. And what I would say is this, we have had some success. And the reason we've had success is when you speak the truth and you keep driving that, the left doesn't have much truth. So when they're talking, they're just talking all over the place, and they don't get any traction. And we have one particular board member, she literally-
But then no personal attacks?
No personal attacks, that was an observation.
And actually, your time is really up, so that we can give it to any-
Okay, so I was just gonna say, tapers off, literally, with a lower volume of voice because there's really nothing to put forward that helps.
I'm Annie Payne. I ran for the Mentor School Board. I started off with my son when I pulled him out of school because of the mask mandates and masks and him learning just didn't go together. So that was kind of my push to form a group. And long story short, they were kind of like, we need you to run. And I was like, okay, sounds good. So that's kind of how I landed here. One of the big pushes for me, just real quick, was a teacher training that I found out prior to running that really gave me the push to run because the first question on the teacher training that we paid over a quarter million dollars for was, how can I become a co-conspirator in a curriculum that's rooted in whiteness? So when I saw that, I was like, okay, all right, I'm running. So I still homeschooling my child, and I actually will have two being homeschooled this year. And I am in the middle of the battle, I call it, so fighting for the same things that we all are up here.
Thank you, Annie. Jeremiah Sawyer, School Board, North Royalton. I decided to run for school board because of basically COVID. My kids were learning remotely. I saw the depression, the drug use, the alcohol use, everything went up. Kids were not getting educated anymore, there was no academics, and it was out of control. I spent a lot of time going to board meetings, speaking to the existing board members, and realized that if we didn't take over, it was just gonna remain like this. I went and talked a couple times in front with hundreds of parents that were all trying to get the kids back in school. Our three board members, none of them had kids in school, and it was really frustrating as a parent, seeing our kids suffer because of people that were blind to what was going on at homes all across the country. So I ran on this. Once I got in, I realized kind of what Scott and Annie talked about. I didn't realize all the crap that was going on in the schools. I was amazed my high school opened up. And as Tom alluded to, I didn't realize how much, your speaker, how much of a battle front the schools are for our freedom, for our children, for the future of our country. It's such an important piece that I never realized. I was always involved in politics, always followed politics, but I didn't realize how important school boards are for our children and the future of our children. So and then the other thing is that in Ohio, there's not really a lot of ways to get conservative, faith-based things into your schools, or advice on how to handle things in your schools. So I formed a group. Am I getting ahead of myself? Or do I? Ten more seconds.
Ten more seconds.
I formed a group called OSBCC, Ohio School Board Constitutional Coalition, to get other conservative school board members in Ohio, and Annie, Scott, Tom are all in the group, to share ideas of how we can improve our schools, what are policies we can do, what are resolutions we can do, what are laws that we can push that are in Columbus. But to share ideas, because the existing structure is all leftist structure, it's all has that, it's all ingrained into the system. So those are, that's kind of my extended spiel. Thank you.
Terrific answer. You should hold that, you should hold that. So one thing I failed to do is, you know me as the president of the Lake County Liberty Coalition. I'm also in my third term as a school board member of the Riverside School District, and so Scott and I are actually on the same board, but just wanted to make sure everybody was aware of that. So now we have the first of seven questions, and we'll rotate around for the first answer. But question number one-
We don't know these questions are also-
They have not seen that?
We do not, yes.
And at the end, get a piece of paper out, write them on their answers, okay? And then tell them what, just joking. All right, so the first question is, what was your experience running for school board? And give about a minute, minute and a half, two.
My experience running for school board was actually really cool. It was awesome. I did a lot of door-to-door, I did a lot of grassroots campaigning, I met tons of parents, even more grandparents than parents I met, who are so concerned about their grandkids' education. And I'm not, I'm not a real social person, I'm a little more introverted, you might not know that by seeing me or hearing me, but I actually am. I like to do my thing and hang out with my family and keep out of my business, you know? But campaigning was so much fun because I've met people that had the same beliefs as me and the same values, and I knew what a great city I live in, and there's a lot of good people, but they just didn't step up to, they didn't know how to step up to get involved with stuff. So doing the door-to-door and getting the grassroots parents and grandparents involved with your campaign, we did a sign thing, we did over 250 signs by people asking, because we got such a good name out there, because we were doing a lot of grassroots campaigning and meeting people. So for me, I loved it, and I didn't realize how much I would like it because I'm not a politician, I'm very straightforward, I don't have, I'm not good at playing games, I'm a, you know, so I was so shocked at how much I liked it, so. That's my story.
Thank you.
I wish I could say the same. I didn't enjoy it as much as you.
There was a lot of negative things that happened, but I won, so I don't care. They banned me, all that. Actually, there was a lot of dirty politics, but I'm standing here because I won, so. It was worth it.
Yeah, I think for me too, I'm gonna echo a lot of what Jeremiah said. It was awesome in the terms that I met people who had the same beliefs as me and wanted to fight the same fight. And I actually carried, if you look at my chair, there's a little blue binder, I carried that with me because so many times people were like, that's not really happening, is it? And I'm like, well, let me show you the check registers, let me show you the pictures and the screenshots of, you know, different things. But campaigning was hard. I know Diane's in the room too, she kind of, she ran as well, and we actually tied, and I only made it by eight votes. But we teamed up at the end, and I'm so thankful for the supporters, you know, that I have still, who fight the same fight that I'm fighting and who come to the board meetings and help support. And the people I met throughout campaigning were just phenomenal people. And so that part was awesome. The part that was not awesome was, I did end up getting threats. At one point, I did have to call the police, they had to come to my house, talk about, you know, different social media threats that I was receiving, me and my family, so. That part was not fun, but as Jeremiah said, I'm here, God had a plan, and I'm very thankful, so.
My story is a little bit different. My wife was gonna run, so she started calling school board members in our area at Riverside and asking questions and getting answers. And I would come home from work and walk through the door, and she would ask me a couple of questions, I'd give her the answers, and then that would happen again and again and again. And finally, I came home one day, and she was doing a lot of research. And I came home one day, and she asked me a question, I gave her the answer, and she goes, I'm not running, you are. So I said, like Odie, okay. So, okay, so how did I win? I put out a sign. People really don't know me a whole lot, even though I've been living there for 32 years in Concord Township. A lot of my works, I have a roofing business, is in the Shaker Heights area. So I put out a sign and it simply said, no CRT. And that was like a magnet, because it was in the news every day with Loudoun County, Virginia. And so God just took over, and I got a lot of votes. And so when I was campaigning, handing flyers out, of course, there's early voting, and there were a number of people that said, oh yeah, I already voted for you. Well, of course, they had never met me, but it was the sign, the sign said everything. So that's why I'm here. I would also add, there's a God element in this. There's nothing that I'm doing because I have great ideas, he has laid everything out, and he needs hands and feet. And if we're willing to be the hands and feet, he will give the victory. Okay, and that's what I'm doing.
If you could give the microphone to Annie, please. Question number two, again, they have not seen these questions, so they're hearing it for the first time. What was your biggest surprise once you were elected?
My biggest surprise was, I thought, you know, once I got in there, I was used to the pushback from the community members. I did not think I would get the amount of pushback from the other board members, it was tough. Just feeling targeted and feeling like I was in a hostile environment was something that I did not expect at all. I expected it from the people who would come up and speak up at the board meetings, you know, consistently, that were on the other side, but I didn't expect that volume of, I'll just say hostility in the board. So that was surprising to me, so that would be the one thing, yeah.
All right, Scott.
The biggest surprise for me, I guess, would be learning just how wide and far-reaching the job can be if you want to put in the amount of time. When you're the board and you're overseeing the operation of a whole school district, there's a lot there. And so normally, board members come to a meeting, discuss some things, make some decisions, figure out how to spend money, and sometimes have difficult decisions as to whether to keep administrators or teachers, and/or someone leaves, who you're gonna hire and things like that. All that's important, but you can really get into the weeds. I mean, I went in and I monitored a history class, and I have not done other classes yet, just because I really haven't had the time. But I want to go and I want to, I want to go in and be present in many other classrooms to see what's going on, how teachers are doing, how the kids are doing, and all of that. But wow, it could be, it could be far-reaching. So we are in the process of doing a renovation project, and we're just at the beginning stages of even hiring an owner's agent that will be a liaison between the board and the contractor to make sure everything gets done properly and correctly. So what I did with another gentleman who was willing to give us time is, we went in to Junior High, John R., and Riverside High School, and literally went through all the rooms, all the classrooms, cafeterias, everything. And we inventoried everything, light bulbs, light fixtures, outlets, ceiling tiles, I mean, everything. So now we are prepared, we have some information, but let me tell you, it took over 100 hours just doing that. Okay, so the job can be pretty big if you want to delve in.
All right, kind of what I talked about in my intro, my first biggest surprise was the lack of conservative faith-based support in the, in the system. There was none. That was my biggest surprise. I'm gonna have two of them allowed to, except my first one will just be quick. My second one is the lack of the discussion of academics in the boardroom. It just about never comes up. So those are my two, I'm gonna keep it quick, and I'll wait, there'll actually be questions on those, but those are my two biggest shots.
All right, thank you. And if you could cast the microphone to Scott, please. All right, question number three. Question number three, in your opinion, what is the biggest challenge facing government education?
Bringing academics back into it. As we know, or at least most of us know, the scores in the United States for students has been on a downward trend for decades compared to the rest of the world. So bringing academics and quality of information and teaching and learning back into the schools, I think is vitally important if we want to succeed at a higher level than where we are operating right now.
So I'll echo some of what Scott said, but I'm gonna add to it. I see a big challenge right now with parental rights. There's a lot of things that are happening that parents are not aware of, and so kind of shedding some light on that so that parents are aware that, you know, there may be, let's say, gender pronouns surveys going out to your children, and we may also use that data and not share it with parents to let them know if their child, for example, wants, you know, goes from, says, I want to be called her, even though biologically, you know, the child is male. So there's things like that that are definitely challenging, and I think parental rights are, you know, at the forefront of my mind, at least, when I'm making decisions, is, you know, are the parents aware that this is happening? And would they be happy if they were aware that this was happening? And then also bringing things back to academics, because I feel like the parental rights issue is kind of attached to certain things that are at the forefront right now that we're battling, such as, you know, diversity, equity, and inclusion pieces and parts of that that are, in my mind, not appropriate. So, yeah.
To me, the biggest challenge, and Scott and Annie both echo them really well, it falls in line with that, but it's getting parents involved with the schools, taking the school boards back, and getting the community to take the schools back. I believe that parents are involved and really know what's going on, and they're really taking, because you have a lot of rights, both legally and influence by being involved with your school board and your schools. If parents go get involved, decide to run for school board, voice their opinion to the school board members, voice their opinion to the superintendent, and just own it, that'll be so huge. It'll, it could turn the education in Ohio over by 2023 or 2025. The next election is 2023, and half, two-thirds to, or two-fifths to three-fifths will be up for election in 2023. And then again, it's a four-year term, and 2025, we can take these schools over if there's a will, and people have to know what's going on, and have to get involved. And to me, that's the most important thing. If you get involved, then you'll make the changes, and then all the challenges that were mentioned can be overcome if we own it, take it back.
All right, thank you very much. Question number four, how important is it to have parents and other interested community members in the audience during school board meetings?
If you want to make a change, it's very important. Going to the meetings, there's a public discussion point, either in the beginning or the end or both. All boards do it a little different, or a little similar, you know? But it is very important if there's an important issue. A lot of it is boring, a lot of it's kind of stupid, I'll be honest with you, it's kind of nonsense. A lot of, you know, you got, you got the Roberts rules, and then you have all this agenda that's got 100 things in it that the staff has all week, all month to prepare, and also school board members, we're not making any money, we're supposed to agree to like 50 agreements, that's millions of dollars, and we're really not exposed to it that much, like. So there's a lot of boring stuff that happens, but it is important if you got a issue that you want to address, or there's things that you want to engage with, because we answer to the public, we answer to the parents, we answer to the voters, and they need to know, especially like Annie's one of four kind of on her, or one of five on her board, I'm two of five on my board, so we don't have majority. So we need parents to speak up to help us push it over the edge. Like we've had like four or five votes already in six months where it's been the two new people in North Royalton against the three old timers in North Royalton. That's no offense to old timers, but they just have to be the old timers on the board. So that's where your influence is so important, when you're speaking up in the board meetings. It can start to change the hearts and minds of the existing ones, or at least get you ready to come in and take it over.
All right, if I could, just one clarification. We actually do get paid $125 a meeting. It's very de minimis, but we do get paid, just wanted to make sure that you were aware of that. It's de minimis, but we do get paid a little bit.
Before taxes.
Very $120 before taxes, yes.
So I'm gonna also, again, kind of reiterate what Jeremiah said. It is so important, especially for me on the mentor board. I see some people here who are consistently coming to our board meetings to support and encourage me as a board member as well, because there are times when I have felt so targeted, and I'm like, I don't know, God, is this really what you want me to do? And then people come to the board meeting and they speak up, I'm like, okay, I'm not a little faith to Jesus. So, you know, I think it's so important, it's important that, you know, we are not looked at as the minority group and just pushed off to the side, because you do have a lot of people that, at least in men, are that come to the board meetings and are very boisterous on their opinion. So if they're only hearing from one side and not hearing from the other, it makes it seem like that side that's being the loudest is the majority, when in reality, it might not be that way, so.
I agree, and I agree. So parents showing up and community members, even if your kids aren't in school, okay, it's important and it's valuable. We have had that at the Riverside Local School District. We've had people come that don't have kids in the district any longer, but they are very concerned about how things are going in the schools. They want to have very high-quality schools, they want things to be run the right way, and they don't want us to go left off of a cliff. Okay? So the numbers, Mr. Hack has been very good at putting forward percentages of numbers, and you don't want to get too political in all of this, but there are facts. Okay, so with 94% of the teachers are given to the left, and 6% are given to the right, it kind of tells you where we are. So we're fighting that, and how you fight that is you show up. If you don't show up, how can you win? Okay, if you show up and speak, like in our meeting, there's a three-minute limit, but you can say a lot in three minutes. And so, and if you're consistent, and you come and you speak, and you say, look, I would like to see this changed, or I'd like to see this implemented, or I have a concern about this, or I like that, or whatever you would say, all of that is valuable and important. And even if we could get 10 people in a meeting just to come and speak, it would be meaningful, just 10.
All right, so just a point in case, case in point, three minutes is a long time. Scott said all of that in one minute and 24 seconds. You can get a lot out in ten minutes. All right, so if you could give the microphone to Annie. Question number five, is there any support you wish you had but do not?
As in, more people on my board would be great, who believe the same way. Outside of that, I am very fortunate, the people who supported me when I ran for my campaign, and also who supported Diane, they have, there's been a core group of people who really have shown up and stuck by me throughout this whole experience and who have not left me, who have spoken up, written in, you know, wrote in, emailed in, and expressed their opinion, as well as shown up, everything. So I'm very grateful for them.
Okay, of course, having more members on the board that are like-minded to be able to get more things accomplished would be good. I would say that there has been support, quiet support, because teachers can't go out front and speak openly if they're on the conservative side, because they get beat up by other teachers and the unions. So there's been quiet support from teachers, administrators, staff, I would say all three at Riverside, and that's encouraging. I would like to see more support, literally, in the administration. I think we have all heard the news that there are plenty of school boards that just let the superintendent run things. And I would say that I would like to see a little bit more collaboration, starting at the superintendent, the assistant superintendent, and on down through the administration. I mean, that's a wish list, okay? But it would be nice to be more cohesive and more collaborative in working towards common goals. So that's a wish list.
All right, there's been excellent, from my experience, there's been excellent support from the community in North Royalton, from myself at the SIB, who I write anything, it's shocking, North Royalton. It really, our administration's been pretty supportive. But where I see a huge need of support is from Columbus, from our legislators. There's like six bills sitting in various committees that all hit on a lot of these important issues, whether it's biological boys in female sports, whether it's all the diversity and equity stuff in education, whether it's, where's some of the other good ones? There's a lot of good ones, I'll just leave it that way. If you want more of them, I can give them to you.
HB 327.
That's the, yeah. So we, but the story I'm hearing more and more of is, if the governor doesn't approve of it, it won't get passed. So a lot of these things are stuck, so in legislative committees, so we can use a lot of support with that. We could also use a lot of support from more conservative groups coming up and supporting the school board members, kind of like I talked about before, which is why I formed the OSBCC, to support other board members so that we start getting stronger, we start having policies to make changes at the local level. Because I don't know, like, there's some great ideas in Riverside, but I don't know about them, because they're kind of hidden in Riverside. You know, there's some great ideas maybe in men, but I don't know about them. So that we need more best practice sharing so that we can implement these ideas across the state. And, because if you go to the, there's a couple monopolies, there's Neola and OSBA, which are kind of monopolies in Ohio, they kind of control.
Why don't you talk about what you're really, as you question, state cases?
So Neola is like a group of lawyers, I guess you'd say it's an organization that writes the policies for all the school boards, and you sign an agreement with them, and then, once a quarter, new policies come out, and you basically say, yeah, we're gonna implement those, or we're not gonna implement those, but they're written from a more left viewpoint, and they don't give you a lot of options to modify them to meet your local school needs. OSBA is Ohio School Board Association. They do training for all the school board members, and they've got a very, although they're, they're moving a little bit now with some of the influence that's happening, but it's, it's still definitely left of center. It's all training on, all five board members should get along and go along and get along. You're not supposed to disagree, you're not supposed to debate things in public, those kind of things that give you that kind of like brainwashing. And a lot of their platforms aren't parent, parent rights-driven, privacy protection of your students, your children-driven, and that kind of stuff. Did I hit on those? Because you know them better than I do, but in my short amount of time, I've seen a lot that-
Yeah, no, I think you hit the nail on the head. I just, you know, we talk and jargon all the time, people in the audience, you know, this is new to them, so I just want to make sure that they have context. All right, if you give the microphone to Scott, please. Question number six, what advice do you have for people who might be considering running for school board?
Do it. All right, so going back to the last question, HB 327 would make CRT and social emotional learning illegal in Ohio. Okay, so that bill is written, and it's sitting on the desk in the Speaker of the House's office, and he refuses to bring it out. Nothing will happen now because the election is coming. But we have a lot of rhinos, and so part of our involvement as people is to get out there and vote in more people that will do the right thing once they are in office. Okay?
I'm sorry, what was the question?
What advice do you have for people who might be considering running for office?
So just do it, right? Okay, so you have to have a mindset and a desire to be willing to spend the time and the energy to go in and do it. So if it's a maybe, then you might not do it. You have to get past that maybe point, and you have to want to accomplish something. If you're gonna go in and without a real drive, you're gonna get beat up unless there's already a majority. If there's already a majority and you're another vote, then maybe's good enough, because- If there's already a majority and you're another vote, then maybe's good enough, because you're gonna solidify the vote. But if there's only one or two and there's five board members, then you're gonna have to want to do it, because it's gonna be a lot of hard work, and you're gonna be fighting uphill, okay? I have been attacked vociferously ever since I put my signs out, okay? And it hasn't stopped. Now, I'm the type of person that doesn't bother me a whole lot. I'm used to a good fight and a good battle. I played plenty of sports, and I like winning. So, the way I look at it is, bring it on, whatever you have to bring, I'm gonna find a way to win, okay? But you really have to have a mindset like that, I believe.
All right, Scott, you nailed it. Couple other things I'd add to it committerally. Get your petitions to the Board of Elections, get your, depending on how big your community is, 150 signatures, I think I had to do around 125. Get them early, get them in, and start organizing your core team of people that are gonna help you to get out, get the name out, get the word out, and have a good campaign strategy. You know, the basics, but have some social media presence, as much as I hate it, you gotta have a little bit of it. Have some good signs, cheapsigns.com is really cheap, I don't know if you guys found better ones, but they were cheap for me. Get some signs, order more than you need, because you're gonna need more if you're really gonna campaign hard. Don't do what I did, I ordered 100, then 100, then 100, it was a lot more expensive. Would've been better if I just bought like 500 right away. Postcards, make sure you get a postcard-sized postcard. I got a little too big a postcard, so I had to use regular stamps instead of postage stamps. That's a little tip, you'll save a couple hundred bucks. And just have a good organized message, keep your message simple, have some key points you want to hit on, have more detail behind it, but keep it a simple message of what you're gonna run on. Find somebody to partner up with, if it makes sense, like, in North Ralton, I partnered up with Lisa Shuck, we ran together, so we were on the same signs, we split costs, we were on the same postcard, we door knocked together, you know, we were at the polls together, we had a team at every poll. Be at the polls, how many polls you have in your city? We had six polls in our city, we had somebody at every poll, we had signs there, you know, so you really gotta hit it hard, but have a good strategy, and you can get advice from people, you gotta ask around. And you have to make it fit your city, you know, it's different in every city. You may have a different approach that you have to take for your city and your dynamics of your board, but have a plan and have a strategy and have a support team to help you do it. But it is a lot of fun, even though it's a lot of work, but it is a lot of fun, especially when you win.
And the winning part was the best. So, I would say, do it, we need you, so please do it, and don't be afraid to do it. Don't be afraid of people calling your names at first. It was harder for me to hear that, because I know my value, and especially my value with the Lord, and so hearing negative things about me did affect me at first, and then my skin got a little thicker. And fortunately, I have a boxing background, so I'm familiar with opposition, and my husband and I, he's there, and we both were amateur boxers, so we had a strong will, you know, to keep going, so I would say, don't let that get you down. And as Jeremiah said, there's a lot that you have to put into it. Start early, because I was just flabbergasted by how much money you need, at least in Mentor, to run for a school board. I think it was anywhere, all of us spent anywhere from like $5,000 to $10,000. It was a lot of money to compete. We had about seven people running for three spots, so getting support behind you early, getting fundraisers early, going door-to-door, as much as you can targeted, you know, door-knocking and just get out there in the community so people know you and can support you early.
All right, thank you very much.
One thing.
For a smaller community, I spent $2,000 for my campaign, just to put in perspective for our city, that's what I had to spend. Mentor's a little bigger than North Ralton. And yes, we have ready-to-be-called names. A former school board member that was on tenure that I beat, the first time I met her face-to-face at a school function, she called me an asshole. So, be ready for some of that stuff.
All right, the last and final question, and then we'll open it up to the audience as well. The seventh question is, if you could change anything regarding school boards, what would it be?
Only one thing. The first thing off the top of my head is term limits, but I'm biased on that, because I have a school board with one person with 25 years, one person with 15, one person with 10, and none of them have kids in school. So that's my first thing. The structure is all wrong. I mean, we're overseeing 50 to 200 million dollar organizations. We're responsible for approving huge contracts that go all over the state to a lot of groups that help each other out. We get $125 per meeting, we don't get any money for all the outside work we do. It's a huge responsibility if you're gonna do it right. It's almost really a full-time job, or some type of a paid political job, if it's gonna be a campaign and you get elected. The structure should be where people can really commit to it and do it properly. Like, we don't get to audit these things the way they need to be audited, like how Scott was touching on, the auditing, building and stuff. It really, if I were to really, not go by my first impulse of the term limit, you'd structure it so you can get people in there that could run it like a compassionate business, I'll say. You know, a business with love, because you're caring, it's the safety of the kids and the academics of the kids. And you need, but you need to dig into this stuff, and they don't give you enough time, because you're trying to do it as a full-time parent and as a full-time employee of another company, and it's not structured to be able to really do it the right way. We should really do it the right way, we should really be in on these decisions, and we should really be vetting these contracts, and really be making better decisions for the business, the money of the business, and then making decisions to protect the kids, and then make decisions on the academics. Like I said before, you hardly even talk about academics. So the structure, if I were to fix it, I would really change the structure so you can have a real board like, you know, a Fortune 500 business would have as a board. Thank you.
So, I would change the timeframe that I get the agenda, is the first thing, because I get it on a Friday and we're voting on a Tuesday, and nobody's in the office on Saturday or Sunday, so it gives me only, you know, one day on Monday and half a day on Tuesday to ask questions. And just to put that into perspective, one recent thing that I had to vote on was a book collection for our K-5 elementary schools for book carts that will be going in every single classroom, K-5, and there were about 1,400 books. When I saw that on the agenda back in April, when it was supposed to be originally voted on, I said, "I wanna look at some of these books, how do I see them?" So, "Well, you can go and look at them." So I went to go look at them, and I did not have enough time to look through all of them, and I did find books that were referencing sexuality, political activism with ELM, and it recently was passed, the book collection has been passed. I voted against it at our two meetings ago, but unfortunately, it still did pass. So, you know, additional time to really vet these things would be helpful. That would probably be my first thing. The second thing is, I come from a background in organizational leadership at HR, so when I would talk in a group, I don't think I want everybody believing the same way as me, to be honest, on the board, because diversity in ideology is okay, and it's good if you're all collaborating and working together. So if it's not gonna be an echo chamber, because I don't think group think is the way to go, or echo chambers aren't the way to go, I would like to change that. I would like to ensure that, even though it's supposed to be nonpartisan, that there are, you know, equal representation on the board, so that there can be good discussion and good policies that come out of it.
I agree with Jeremiah that it should be a paid position, and $125 is, as everyone chuckled, is almost a joke. So, that's one of the first things I thought when I came in and realized how much time and effort you should be putting in to do the job. And what I was thinking was, at least, at least something, $15,000, $20,000, something to make it worthwhile for someone to come in and spend the time to do it. So, I guess that's one thing I would say. And going back to campaigning, I would say if you're going to run for a Board of Education position, I would try to talk with other people that are doing that and/or someone who has already filed to run. Do not split the vote, okay? If you have three of you going for one seat, have one of you going for one seat, and have everyone vote for that one person. If someone says, "Oh, I have this idea, I wanna run," and another person says, "I have this idea, I wanna run," well, those two people should get together if there's one seat and figure who's gonna run. Tom and I are in the minority unnecessarily so, because others split the vote, and because of only 37 votes, okay, we're in the minority. And if we would not have, others would not have split the vote, we would have a majority, okay? So I think there has to be some thought and consideration into that.
All right, thank you very much. So, we're gonna open it up to questions, and I'm not asking you now, but I would like you to think of questions, because this has been fascinating for me, and I'm in my third year or third term as school board, so hopefully it's been fascinating for you as well. But as you, I'd like you to line up over there when the time comes, but I did want to add some context, right? So, a few things that were mentioned, and I'll fill in what I think are some of the gaps that maybe would be helpful from your perspective. So, the school board itself only hires two people directly, the superintendent and the treasurer, that's it. So, everybody else that is, who is hired, is hired at the recommendation of either the superintendent or the treasurer. And so, it's an arms-length relationship, as it should be. I don't, I would never advocate for school boards to have operational influence control, but it's definitely, it's, you know, you're not really driving the ship, you're only kind of telling, you know, you're hiring the driver of the ship, basically, through the superintendent and the treasurer as well. The other thing, just to give you a sense of scale, I am sure Annie's Mentor Mentor is much, much, much larger, but our budget at Riverside is about $50 million. We have approximately 450 staff, and that includes, you know, obviously the teaching staff, but it includes the custodial, includes the folks who cook the meals, it includes the bus drivers, and I'm sure I'm forgetting some other category of people as well, but it's a big operation. We have, we have a number of schools, I can't wait, we have six schools?
Seven.
Seven schools, thank you, right. Anyway, and I should've known that, I fell on my head, I'm embarrassed, but hey. But the bottom line is, it's a big operation. We have, you know, I have never added it up, but I bet we have over a million, probably between 500,000 and a million square feet of space that's under a roof that we're responsible for. This is, it's a big operation. The reason I, you know, we had a conversation with the executive committee, which includes Nancy and Matt and Madeline, and the reason we wanted to pursue this meeting today is that we are a year out. We're less than a year out from people who have to fill out their petitions to run for a school board. And I wanted you to hear what's going on, what some frontline people are experiencing, that you can also see that they've had trials and tribulations, but you can also see that they're still standing. They've had successes, they've had setbacks, but they're in the game. And we have always been about self-governance at Lake County Liberty Coalition, so I want some of you to think about running. Not everybody should run. We talked about a lot of things, you need to be smart, you need to be adept, you need to be plugged in, but you're also, there's an element that's less quantifiable, there's electability, and there's desire and drive. So that doesn't work for everybody, but if you can run, if you kind of check those boxes, you really should run. And you can talk to us now or later about what that looks like and whether or not you should do it. But regardless of whether or not you're a candidate, a potential candidate, everybody in here can be involved. You can help support a candidate by helping them go door-to-door and do other things that support them. You can also, everybody here can cut a check, right? You know, $5, $10, whatever it is, all of us are able to financially support them. Obviously, the candidate of your choice, but you can, there's no reason why anybody in this room should be on the sideline in 2023 when it comes to the school board races. So with that, hopefully, some of you have questions, and I'd like you to join me over here, so if you could just come up and stand up, don't be shy. And as you are spurred forward and inspired by the questions, please come on over. But Sharon, please, you're first.
Not shy. I used to be shy, but it's still works, yeah. So, my question is, last fall with the mask mandate, I came and presented to the school board members with affidavits and showing how they were violating the U.S. Constitution. Any unrebutted affidavit stands as truth and law. They did end up repealing the mask mandate, but they didn't understand what I presented to them at all. So my question for all of you is, I'm, we're, a lot of us are coming back, the violating parents' right is another violation of the Constitution, we are going to be submitting affidavits again, and how do you feel about this? And anybody that doesn't feel like they can run for school board affidavits, hit those people. And when you get those affidavits, we pull their bonds and they're out and can never run again. So what's your feeling about all of that?
Let me just jump in, so I did set the ground rules very well, I apologize. One minute, 30 seconds, one and a half minutes, reply, and then we'll have each of the, each of our panel analysts go ahead and speak to that, so please go ahead.
So my one minute and 30 seconds will go like this, I fully support that. So one more, one more thing I wanted to say. My main goal in working in Riverside School Board is to make Riverside the gold standard, okay? There's no reason why we can't reach for the top, being the best, such that maybe we're the template that everyone else follows. So anyway, it's a thought process and it's a goal, and I myself am working towards that, and will continue to do that.
I support fully parental rights and also unmasking our children, so if that is what a parent wants, I fully support that. I know Sharon, I saw you, I was in the audience at that point, and I was like, "Who is that going up there?" But, I mean, I was cheering, so clearly I support that thought. I would say too, there are several times where I do feel, and I do say during the meetings, that we are, in my opinion, violating parental rights. Like I mentioned with the pronouns survey that went out to our high schoolers per teacher last year, when you ask a child what gender they want to be, and then don't tell the parent that the child answered differently than their biological gender, that's a problem. When you have a child using a different bathroom without their parents' knowledge, and especially in the transgender community, there's a 30% increase or percent risk of suicide. Parents deserve to know. So, I'm definitely a parental rights advocate, and I would, you know, cheer for anybody who also is doing that.
Amen to all that, and to what Sharon said, I support it 100%. A lot of this has to get solved legally, the left does a good job of this, doing lawsuits to push it on the other direction. The right tends to not do enough lawsuits, so you should be doing different legal actions to hold the school board accountable, because sometimes they can't do anything. I might voice my opinion, and Annie might voice her opinion, but we're minorities in our school board. And then a lot of times, the legal counsel for our boards is very liberal and leftist, so they're actually not acting in what we would consider our best interest, but they'll still get legal advice that will skew to the other direction. So you gotta bring the heat, a lot of this stuff is not gonna be solved until the heat happens. The gender issue, it's gonna take the heat, like the biological boys and biological girls sports, we're just waiting for somebody to get hurt or rape to happen. The thing I've been preaching is, let's be proactive, let's stop it now before something bad happens, because then a lawsuit is gonna happen.
All right, thank you very much. Next question.
Good. So first, thank you for sharing your experiences. Scott, you had mentioned when you first took the mic that you have had some successes. I'd like to know what those are. Second, I think everybody knows the garbage that's going on, I've seen books, there's some here tonight. What are you doing to counteract those measures to get that out? Because I gotta believe there's something proactively you can do besides taking a legal channel to eliminate this stuff. And I know in some of the talks I've given, what's really gonna wake a parent up or even change a school board member is when it was your daughter in the locker room watching a gender male watch her be undressed. Then the reality sits in, and it doesn't matter if you're left or right, it becomes an issue of right and wrong.
Agree 100%, and I would suggest that when you become a school board member, you should have the viewpoint and the outlook that every kid in that school is your child, okay? Because then, it makes a difference. And if you take an arms-length position away from that, and you say, "Well, that's not my kid," or "A relative," or anything like that, then right, you know, things can just wander off into... wander off into bad things. What, what, what kind of successes have we had? What I would say is bringing awareness, uh, to the administration, the staff, the teachers, uh, other school board members and the community about the things that are going on in the school and not stopping, okay? Other school board members would like to say, oh, we talked about that once, we don't need to talk about that anymore. No, it's an ongoing conversation, okay? So bringing the truth out and continuing to talk about the truth and where we need to go, where we are and where we need to go, um, i- is important, and, and the success is that, uh, the other side is losing ground, if you will, they're losing, they're losing momentum, because as you start chipping away with truth, you're eating into their territory. What they like to do is they like to say, well, here it is, you can't touch this, and go away, go home, and don't worry about it, and we're saying, no, we're starting to take territory. And as we take more and more territory, we'll get someone else in the community to run, and then when we get the majority, now we can, we can run the table, we can, we can uh, write new policies and bylaws, we can put accountability measures in there, they have to have teeth. It doesn't matter if you have a law or a policy, if there's no teeth, no accountability, it, nothing will ever come out of it. You have to have some accountability, so I, I'm not gonna share what my thoughts are right now, but I have a lot of thoughts and ideas in that regard, and I think that, that once we get our third vote, uh, we're gonna have a lot more success, and we're gonna take ninety-nine percent of that territory.
So, um, a couple things that I have, I will call successes, uh, even though essentially the vote did not go the way that I wanted to see it. A lot of what I do is shed light on what's going on so that more parents and community members are able to know what's going on, then they speak up as well. Um, and I, I'll just show you a couple different things that kind of were brought to light, the vote didn't go as I would've liked, but at least parents knew that this was happening. So the first book I'll show you is called Transphobia. Thank you. Transphobia, Deal With It and Become a Gender Transcender. So, um, this is in our middle school at, I know, it's, people laugh because they're like, it's not really happening, I'm like, no, literally, this book is in there, and it was next to a door in our, in our middle school library where kids were going in and out all day long of the class. So, the problem I have with this book is not even that it references the transgender community, the problem is it talks about how certain kinds of thinking is wrong, and if you think there's only two genders, you're wrong, and your parents are wrong, and that therefore makes you a trans, you know, you're therefore transphobic, um, which has been a name that I've been called. So, um, yeah, there's quizzes that, you know, you can see if your parents are transphobic, you can see if you are transphobic, um, yeah, if you think there's only two genders, you're transphobic.
Tell him you're reality phobic.
So what I did was, um, this actually, thankfully, we do have wonderful teachers, we've got wonderful, wonderful staff that feel the same way as us and feel like they're caught in the middle, and so a lot of times they will send people these, you know, books or different things, or materials that are in the classroom and say, hey, just so you know, this is in there. So then, we had, um, community members that actually did a book challenge on this, so this is something, how you can get involved, there was a book challenge to bring this to light, and then we voted on it on a board, as a board, and I was the only one to vote against this book, and so it is sitting in our middle school right now. Uh, just one more real quick thing, uh, so that K-Through-Five book collection that I was referencing earlier in the conversation, one of the books is this Colin Kaepernick book. Um, and in this book, it talks about BLM, it talks about how wonderful it is and the, how there's terrible police brutality. Now, we had a discussion on the board about how we can't get enough police officers to be in our buildings at all of our schools, because there's not enough people going into that field. And we had three people at the, at the board meeting, three police officers there to protect us, and I said, we just had this discussion about how we can't get enough police officers, but we're gonna put this book in our fifth grade classrooms, um, so that kids can go pull it off during silent reading time and read it by themselves without their parents' knowledge. And so, it's still sitting in there, because they did pass this whole book collection, along with Heather Has Two Mommies, A Boy Named Queen, um, and Tango Makes Three, which is about two penguins that fall in love that are both males, and they end up adopting a male penguin, uh, child. So, those are just some things, but at least, you know, we can't force votes, but we can bring it to light, shed light on it, and hopefully community members can then speak up and, uh, voice their opinion.
Genderqueer is another book, Genderqueer, if you look that up, it's a graphic arts comic book that shows males engaging, all different sex, engaging in oral sex, uh, in his, in libraries across Ohio. Scott and Annie nailed it again, I got the easy end going third, but the, the number one thing that, like in my school district, cuz we don't have a majority, is shining light on the darkness, and we've done a lot of that in six months, um, and these people have done a lot of that in six months. But how we can succeed is, school boards have the authority to write and pass policy. We can write policies to address any of these locally. You need to have the majority, and you need to have the law behind you. The law is behind a lot of them, and then some of them is kinda fuzzy, so you just have to interpret it the way you want to interpret it for the, what you're trying to get accomplished. Um, but you can pass policies, you can pass resolutions, which is similar to a policy, but it's not a policy, a resolution might go to a different group or just express what you want them to do, your district to do, as a, uh, how would you explain it sometimes? Do you have a good way to explain a resolution, or we'll just keep it at that for now?
A resol- resolution is an official adoption by the school board, but it, it takes a majority to, to actually pass it.
Um, so those are the things we can do to solve it. An example of shedding light on darkness, OHSAA, which is the Ohio Flight Association, they've been running sports, they have a monopoly of that in, in Ohio, it's the only game in town. Um, most people didn't know, and maybe a lot of you don't know, that for seven years they've had a policy where biological boys can compete against biological girls, it's in their bylaws, it's hidden, uh, in their bylaws, but it is in there, section one dash six dash two, I think, if I remember right. Um, but we brought that up in our meeting about trying to get that, to, to oppose it, and it didn't get passed, but at least it came up in our public meeting, parents hear about it, more parents hear about it, more school boards hear about it, and the more that people can get educated on this stuff, the more they can push back and talk to the, talk to their legislators to pass laws, or talk to their state board, your school board to get, put more, put more pushback on OHSAA, cuz it's disgusting that, that's in their bylaws, um, and they're the, the final arbiter on whether a boy can compete against your daughter.
All right, thank you very much. All right, before we go to the last current question, surely there's somebody on the edge of, of your seat who's wanting to ask a question, but you just don't have the courage? Well, come on up, have the courage and stand up, there's, there's gotta be more than three questions. All right, well, there we go.
All right, Armin. All yours. Thank you. Well, my name is Armin. Thank you guys for running and waiting, it's glad to see some conservatives in there and stirring things up. Uh, so my question is a multiple-part question, uh, while, while I've been standing here thinking about what to ask, so I compiled it together. First question is, have you guys heard of a coalition named Vouchers Hurt Ohio? And have you heard of a lawsuit called Vouchers Hurt Ohio versus State Ohio? Uh, and if so, have they approached you guys to join the lawsuit? And what are your opinions on school choice? And that is my question.
You've got the microphone, Jeremiah, go ahead.
I have the microphone, I have not heard of that, I'm sorry, I have not.
No, it's fine.
Um, I mean, I've heard of the backpack law, which is, which is in Columbus, there's been a lot of debate on the backpack law, which is school choice, basically, I think there's a lot of details that need to be worked out on it. But, I mean, I'm all for competition for schools, I mean, we, we should stand up and be the best we can be, every school should try to be the best they can be, so that we shouldn't worry about money following the children. I mean, Arizona passed a real simple, good law where money will follow the children in Arizona, one of the first states to really pass a good law for that. Taxpayers and parents should have the ability to make a decision if they can't get what they want out of their schools, they should be able to bring their kids to a school that is gonna provide the academics and education that they're looking for for their children. It's a tough one, cuz it's tricky, you know, it's tricky, cuz people say, well, and you're not supporting public schools, you know, but the schools should be doing a good enough job where it doesn't matter, we, we should be representing the best for our community and for our kids, we should be proud of that, and, and we should not be threatened by people who decide that there's a different place to educate their children.
I have heard of that. I can't remember where I saw it, though, um, I wanna say it was on an email that I received for being a school board member, but I don't know who had sent it to me, because I did click on it and I was looking into it. The, being a homeschool mom and being on a board is a little different, so, uh, a lot of times I get, you know, how can you be a homeschool mom and you don't support the school? Well, I do, I just don't support certain initiatives that are being pushed on our children. So, the backpack, like you were saying, Jeremiah, um, in the homeschool community too, there's, there's a lot of buzz about the backpack bill and vouchers and things like that, because in the homeschool community, people are like, I don't want the government even having anything to do with anything I'm doing with my children. So I originally thought the backpack bill sounds great, and then the more I'm digging into it, I'm, I'm kinda still figuring it out, to be honest, there's different perspectives that I need to look at, um, to really get a hold on, on that bill. But I do think that it would, at the very least, push some of this, you know, public school, the public schools to look at what they're doing and say, you know, is this really what we wanna do, because we need, we talk about this a lot, broad support for our schools, so we can't just appeal to a certain type of parent or a certain type of, um, group. So, I, I don't know if I answered your question fully, because I'm still kind of looking into it, so.
I'm a capitalist, and I believe this should be an open market. Money should follow the kids, and anyone that's gonna whine and complain it's taking away from somewhere else, do a better job.
Right, too. Short and sweet. All right, so this, this might be a biased question, but we'll ask anyway.
I thank all three of you for, you know, all the insights, it's amazing here, um, we heard a little bit tonight about how the issues are, kinda tend to be all interwoven, and Scott, you mentioned the, the bill on the House Speaker's desk and the backpack bill. Um, you know, we're encouraging people to show up at school boards, voice their concerns and show support, but some of these bills really do address some of that, that we're trying to accomplish in a fragmented manner across the state. So, we, you know, we gave everyone, um, a little bit of a roadmap for if you wanna run, how do you run? Maybe you could help, you know, educate people how we can support these things at the state level, you know, so that it's not so, such a fragmented effort, board to board to board, like how, how can we support those bills at the state level? Because, correct me if I'm wrong, they will solve a lot of your problems, right?
But what I would say is, the first thing is, contact your representative and contact your senator, and encourage them to pass these bills. And Bob Rep-, Representative Bob Cup, C-U-P-P, I had the opportunity to face up with him, along with my representative and my senator, all three of them were standing in front of me, and I literally got to the point where I said to them, you need me to write the bill for you, because there's been many iterations, it's ready to go, um, all they had were excuses. The representative had excuses, the state senator had excuses, and Bob Cup stood there with his eyes like this wide open with nothing to say. And I told them very clearly, I said, every day that you keep that bill on your desk, you're harming the kids, okay? And they didn't like it, but I gotta tell you, they didn't say anything. So, contact your representative, contact your, your senators, if there's a place to find out what kind of bills there are, boy, I don't know how we would accomplish that.
I've got loose, I'm always BCC, I email.
Yeah, go ahead.
Uh, through OSBCC, we communicate to our group, there's about six different bills, and then there's links to, they're all online, it's all, you can look at it online to read the bills, to see who sponsored it, to see where it's at, what stage it's at in committees, but we share that once a month or once every other month, depending on how much movement on the bills. But, uh, you can research all these bills yourself online and read about them.
Okay, but you're saying OSBCC?
That's, yeah, if you want, I can give you my card, and I can get you on my email list, I have my card in my bag there, so if anybody wants to get on my email list, um, I send that out, or I'll send out the one I sent out last month, just to give you the links and give you a little background on all the bills. But research the bills too, and I'll, cuz I'll be honest, I don't know these bills at the back of my hand, some of them are fifty pages long, you gotta really spend some time and read them to know if, if you really support it. They sound good, but I can't say that I back these bills a hundred percent, they're written in a way that I think will, they have the good intention, at least it seems, from what it all seemed like. Um, but yeah, get my card after, and I can email you a list of like the six bills that affect education and protect.
Jeremiah, how old is OSBCC?
Uh, it's about six months old.
Okay. So it's brand new, and more and more information will be on there, I would say that's the place to go, and you can talk with people and tell them to go there, and Jeremiah is doing a great job, and there's gonna be more and more info, and all that stuff will end up being on his site.
But, and as Scott was saying, yeah, write your representatives, email your representatives, call your representatives, get their cell phones so you can text them, um, raise the voice on it, uh, the new representatives will give you their cell phone, that, the ones that, I feel good for me, and even though they're still not fighting hard enough, you should have their cell phones, there's no excuse, they should, you shouldn't be able to text them, and they should answer you. You voted, they're in your, your districts, you, you're their voter, they should be supporting you, and you should be leaning on them on these things, uh, to hold them accountable. The, the feeling I get, cuz I've been taking up, reaching higher and higher levels on these, with these bills and talking to, um, politicians, they're all afraid of them, nobody wants to touch it, they're a hot, you know, they, they don't feel enough people are supporting them, they're, they're afraid of their own political career instead of making the right decisions. So that's why the people need to keep rising up and pushing, so they know it's important to us, so that they feel some heat to get these things passed.
They've all said pretty much everything that I could say, but I will say, uh, recently I did send an email to our superintendent, because I wanted to ask, you know, if these bills pass, or even, I think it's three twenty-seven, um, the books that we just put in our elementary school, how are we gonna know out of the fourteen hundred books which ones we need to pull? Because they do have divisive concepts in there, and they do have sexuality in there. So, uh, that's a question that I'm still waiting to see what happens with that bill and, and how we would go about that process, so.
All right, you have a question?
I have some, um, I'm not sure if it's gonna be a question or a sermon or a, or a lot of that. Hey. I'm Pastor Roger, uh, from the River Church, uh, we share the building here with Pastor Teresa, who I think is hiding out in her office right now, but, uh, one of the things, there's a bunch of things going through my mind, I don't think there's a question on any of this, but there's, uh, some suggestions for everybody and some, uh, thank you guys for doing what you do, thank you. You are not alone, all right? You're not alone. The safest place you can be when called to the battlefield, if God calls you to the battlefield, that's the safest place you can be, is on the battlefield. If you're not there, that's where you're safe. So don't worry about being on the battlefield, you're there, and he's calling many other people. Folks, you have no idea the depravity and how deep it runs in these public schools, you have no clue. I'm appalled, I've raised six kids, we're trying to get our sixth one through Manner, right now we've got five more years to try and get her through the, uh, school system. I gotta confess, I never went to a school board meeting until this year, until, if COVID did nothing else, it, it exposed the mask thing, which led us to this. Folks, this has been going on for a while, and God's not happy, and he's changing it. And one of the biggest things, one of the greatest things that I can tell you guys, I wanna tell everybody right now, Matthew six thirty-three says, but seek ye first the kingdom, his kingdom, and his righteousness, and all these things shall be added unto you. And anything you do, seek God first, it's not stupid, it's not a waste of time, he really does have a plan and he's working it, and he wants us to be involved in it. So for those of us in the, the room right now that God's working on, and I'm looking at you over the end of it, sorry, that God's working on, for all the potential school board members that are coming up, the school board needs you, and I have a feeling in November, and I'm just gonna declare this, there's gonna be a lot of school systems that the, the board's gonna flip, and it's gonna go from liberal to conservative, and then watch out, and you guys can join me in my prayer, you can join, but we can pray bold prayers, and we saw a bold prayer answered almost immediately into our campaign on this, where we had a superintendent step down out of the middle of nowhere. And I can take you to the place on the floor where we prayed that prayer, and I can show you where we prayed that prayer, and I can remember the group's faces when I made that declaration, they were all looking. And I can remember the group's faces when I made that declaration, they were all looking at me like, we're just getting to know one another. And they're looking at me like, who is this guy?
And they have gotten their way and there are a lot of teachers in those unions that don't go along, don't agree with what the unions are doing. So it comes back to what my thought is, putting the truth out there, chipping away at their territory, taking some of the things away from them, so to speak, not necessarily money or rights or anything like that. But getting, getting schools back to education, being education focused and not everything else focused, which goes to your point about communism and I would say socialism. And so I think it's a step by step process and I think that'll take a little bit longer than some other things. But I think we can get there and, and if I had to put a number on it, I would say that's probably an eight to 10 year program, but that's my thought.
So we actually did have negotiations with, no, you're fine, you're fine, with both unions this year. And directly the board really doesn't have a lot of face to face with our unions. It's usually through, at least for us, it was through our treasurer. I know it's done differently in different districts, but I think for me, I do see a lot of the OEA, the Ohio.
Education Association.
Education Association and then the NEA as well. My, my mom and dad are both retired special education teachers. So they get a lot of the magazines that come to their house and they'll be like, look at this. And I'm like, oh gosh. So one of those things that was in the OEA one was, it was mocking parents, it was mocking parents who wanted to bring books to be challenged. And it was a cartoon mocking parents for doing that. And one of the examples was the Gender Queer book and it was mocking parents saying that they didn't want, you know, their children to see that book. So that's my two cents there.
Yeah, this looks crazy, Danny. Like we just did our negotiations for our contract reviews and we, we're kind of, we're, we're not face to face with this, with, with the union. It's done through our lawyer and our treasurer and our superintendent. And then we get updates, that, that was my experience, the short amount of time we've had with this.
So I have been, and thank you for your, for your answers. I have been through negotiations several times. Sometimes they're contentious. When I first got on the board, we, we actually had, the, the first thing I was involved with when I took my seat in January of, of 2012 is we cut 50% from our budget. And, and we, we did that, mostly it was on the periphery, but there were impacts to, to staffing as well. And, and so that ultimately led to, when things stabilized financially, to a very contentious negotiation, I don't know, 2014, 2015, somewhere in there. But since then, I, I, we've had a reasonably good relationship with, with the unions, which I, which I'm happy to say, because it can be contentious and it is literally a district by district situation. The union locals are not the same. But in, in the end, we, we have issues as, as Brian Massey talked about with, with other rising taxes and an issue with affordability from the public. In, in the end, your, your government can't cost more than your public can pay, right? And so it's, and, and it's going up faster than inflation, at least the last numbers I looked at, which was a few years ago. That's not sustainable. We need to figure out other ways of, of making it work. It's not gonna be sustainable for anyone, right? There's, there is no benefit to anyone, whether you're in the schools or outside the schools, for being on a collision course with a calamity in a situation that we cannot afford. So, so that's, that's what I would say with, with union negotiations, it literally is a, a district by district situation and frankly, it's a timeframe by timeframe. So sometimes you have, you know, good relationships and you can get through things and then leadership will change and it's not exactly the same. So with that, I'd like to give everybody a big round of applause for. All right, so we have a, a special speaker. Can I give you two minutes?
Yes, no, just 30 seconds.
30 seconds. All right, please go ahead.
Thank you for your time. So I'm unique, I'm responsible for all the bags and backpacks back there. So I'm just asking for everybody's support. If you have any young children that need extra school supplies, everything back there is.